How to check the mail.
All right, we're going to call the board meeting now. Independent School District for the Texas Academic Performance Report. Mike, would you be there?
So, Evoli, how do we make this day? We just thank you for the blessings that you're here in. And we just pray that you go into senior and senior. Your will be the range of our lives. In Jesus' name we pray.
I, uh... I'm going to try not to waste any time getting started with our TAPER report tonight. I owe an apology again to Bulldogs of the Month and Teachers of the Month because we drag you here 6:30 and then we do a public hearing on a report that you may care less about. So we'll try to get through this as quickly as possible and then we'll start our regular portion of the board meeting and recognize you guys. Because I know you love sitting up here on the front row, right? Makes you feel real comfortable. So the reason we have this public hearing tonight is to give you or to report our 2017-18 academic performance report. Or as educators, we make an acronym for everything and this is the TAPER report. Just real quick, the way this report's going to look tonight, I'm going to give you a little bit of information about the district as a whole, our A through F rating as a district, kind of the background or where we stand with A through Fs and definitions in that program. Then Ms. Juicy's going to share some grade level, subject level, specific data with you. Mr. Ross will share the same kind of data, specific data with you from the secondary. Ms. Harris will wrap it up with this, giving you some more information that's in our TAPER report as far as attendance rates, graduation, and what is it?
College.
College, career, military readiness. So, no further ado. This year's the first official year for A through Fs to be implemented. So essentially what we're talking about is our state's exams from last spring. And the way the state is implementing the A through F program, it starts with just the district receiving an A through F. Next year, and this will be in my slides later on, next year each campus will receive an A through F and then that will determine or drive the district rating of an A through F. This is a public hearing, public forum, so you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. I ask if you'll save them to the end for the main reason that your question might get answered in one of the next slides. And then plus, we can get through this as quickly as possible for these families. Because I feel bad, again, we drug them here and make them wait through this. So again, our district receives an A rating, an A through F system. On the first page of our TAPER report, you see this district rating and then you will see that we met requirements for 2018 Special Education Determination status and the same for Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery. This data comes from the information in PBMAS, the Performance-Based Monitoring Analysis System. So we had no indicators pop up on Special Ed in PBMAS. And we met this requirement, which was set forth by Senate Bill 1843, means we're offering this to our students. Senate Bill 1843 says you must offer ASAP to your students and we're doing that. So, um, I just threw this up here. Some of you, I've had a few community members ask me, what's the marquee mean that says top 16% academically? Well, I put that up there because I think it's extremely important for us to recognize our successes as a community, as a school district. We don't come together and celebrate the successes of our teachers and our students. We're not doing ourselves any good. When I put 16 up there, that was the data I had, but it's wrong. And I apologize for that. But if you look at what I got off TEA, it's actually about the top 12%, so that's 16, which is even better. These two charts, one includes charter schools, the other excluding charter schools. So when they're ranking them together, because some of our state money is now going to charter schools away from public schools. So anyway, I just want to explain why you see that on the elementary marquee. It's a celebration. It's a celebration we need to be recognizing as a community. Other things in the report, real simple. We, Iowa ISB had no reports about criminal incidents in the 1718 school year. And just in case you didn't know, each month, our SRO Deputy Lasso submits a monthly report about her activity in the district. The A through F accountability system is actually not a full lot of information in the actual TAPER report about A through F, but we need to learn about it as a community as we move forward. So when you see this stuff, you know what it's talking about. But our new system is based off three domains: student achievement, school progress, and closing the gaps. And I'll try to explain those to you a little bit. Student achievement essentially, basically is how well do our kids do on our state exams. And when you look at that information in the paper, you're going to see scores or percentages that fall in these three categories: approaches, meets, and masters is how we rank them now. This used to be met standard, this used to be commended. So kind of the same data you're looking at, but has new labels. Go figure, State of Texas. Our student achievement for the district, again, it's defined, TEA defines student achievement, how much students know and what they can do, and a star performance. This is just straight scores for the district, 84% of our kids at least approached, met standard. And then, oop, sorry, got a little quick there. I think I'm going backwards. Nope, I'm going forward. I apologize for that. Here we are, right here. Another factor that goes into domain one, here's the college career military readiness and graduation rate. But keep in mind, when we're looking at some of this data, it lags one to two years behind. So this is the graduation rate of 2017, and those average out to be a B under student achievement in domain one. Domain two, school progress, how much better are all our students doing than they did last year? And then periods of similar schools. So academic growth, did they grow one year, one academic year? 85% did. Relative performance, again, has to do with peers in similar schools. So let me show you real quick what relative performance looks like. Relative performance takes account for star and again, college career military readiness over here on our Y-axis, and our X-axis is economically disadvantaged. And so they mapped this out, our performance, where we fall economically disadvantaged, and we're right there. So that's what gives us the 84 for relative performance, and it was a B. And then closing the gaps, what this looks at is, in past or in bigger districts, it's looking at subpops or subgroups, different economic groups: African-American, Hispanic, white. Well, in our district, what counts for us is the whole. And then it's compared to economically disadvantaged, because that's the only subgroup we have enough students in to count as a subgroup. So when you compare our, everybody in the district and how our economically disadvantaged students are doing, this is closing the gaps and it was a 96 and A. So you average those together, and this was the average. And one thing I like about TEA, they round. So we have to appreciate them for that. And that's where that A comes from, in A through F. Like I mentioned when I first started speaking, so this month of this year, we'll get what if campus ratings for elementary and the high school. Last year, we got a what-if for the district around this time. So essentially what they're telling us is, we're going to look at the same results I just showed you, and it's going to tell you, if you use this data, this is what that campus would rate, if you use this data, this is what that campus would rate. But then, when we test this spring, that's what those campuses will actually receive an individual A through F score on. So this time next year, I'll not only would talk to you about the district A through F, I'll talk to you about each campus. I share this, guys, because I want to own it. You go and you look at our data, this is kind of decent as three domains: student achievements, school progress, closing the gaps, secondary, same thing. Now, we have some mathematicians in here, and I know that what you already quickly did was try to average these three to get that. And please don't, because the state doesn't make it that simple. What you actually do in this case, the state says they will take the top one of these two domains, and it's 70% of this score. And the other 30% is what you get in closing the gaps. So I can't do that in my head, but that's why I can tell you, this is not an average of those three. They take the top score of these two domains, it's 70%, and then closing the gaps. I put this up there too, because I will tell you, our own issue scores are slipping, and I'm the principal. And so I own those scores. They're mine, and I don't think they're acceptable. So if you're here to tell me that tonight, I already agree with you. They're not acceptable. But I have confidence in myself and the way school works, because please don't forget, I'm the principal down here too, with these scores. When we figure it out down here, we can figure it out up here as well. Yeah, that's on me, and it's up here. And I'm being as transparent as I can possibly be. The entire TAPER report is posted on our website, correct? It's been posted? So...
That should say our district.
Okay, okay. So with that being said though, Ms. Juicy's going to share, like I said, specific grade level, subject data with you about the elementary campus.
I forgot how to use this for lunch.
Yeah, I thought I did. I had a fool out myself.
Okay, so some of the things that we're going to look at, how I did this, was I think it was really important that when we're comparing our scores, especially when it comes to grade level and grade level, that it's not just looking at, you know, third grade reading year after year after year. It's following those groups of kids. How does that group, how do those group of kids perform year after year? So comparing apples to apples. You stay with those groups of kids, almost like tracking them over time. So that's what you're going to see. You're going to see, for example, you know, class of 2027, how did they do when they left second grade? How did they perform on star? And the next one you'll see is how did they do on third grade, and the next class, third grade, and on. So that's what you're going to see. So we're looking at growth of specific student classes. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Oh, I have the control, look at that. Okay, so this is the class of 2027, so our current fourth graders. Last year, they took the third grade star. And so we kind of wanted to track them back also, because we all know that second grade's a very important grade. Now that they've had more TEES pushed down to them, more things they have to cover, they're working really hard to try to get kids ready to go and enter that star grade. So we started here in second grade, kind of where they came in at. So with reading, 16, 17, and second grade, they left second grade at 70% on level, and then on third grade star, 73% of the kids right here were at approaches, which is at grade level. With the math, they, 69% of them came in on level, and then for the math star, we had then 78%. So growing there, which is great, and we want to keep seeing that next year, whenever they take the fourth grade star, we want to keep seeing, or this year rather, we want to keep seeing that line go up into a range that we're super happy with. Okay? I'm not, I'm sorry. Okay. These are our current fifth graders. Okay, so if you remember, last year, this was a group of students that we were really paying closely attention to. We really narrowed down exactly what their needs were, and we, the teachers did a great job of addressing those needs, and you can tell it hasn't been increased here. So with reading, for last year's fourth graders, when they came in on reading star, they were at 48% approaches. And so we, the teachers have a lot of work to do there. And on the star, we had 69%. So quite a lot of growth. We want to keep seeing that line go up. Lots of awesome growth there, so we're very happy about that too. With the math, they came in, or on the third grade star, they did 59% approaches and on the star was 61%. So we're still inching that line up. Hope to see a lot of good growth this year. And remember, this group, we decided, because it was so large and a lot of different things to tackle with them, that we went ahead and split them into three groups. So you've got 17, 18, 14 kids in each class, and so far it seems to be doing, working out well. 2025, current sixth graders, we have their reading. And so if you can see here, how they did last year on the reading, they had 90% on fifth grade, so 90% came in approaches. With our meets and masters, those are two higher groups, we see a little bit of a decrease there. So some of the things that we've been working on, on getting those back up, there's this focus on enrichment, right there, and taking those kids that need to be pushed to the next level, coming up with different things for them to do, and really looking to see what exactly is it they need enrichment on. So not just meeting the needs of some of our struggling kids, but also some of the higher ones too. And then we have, how they did on fifth grade math, they were at 97% approaches, 69 meets, 46 masters. So fifth grade math going up in each category. All right, these are our current seventh graders. All right. We had a dip here in the approaches in reading, but we had an increase in the meets and masters. So we're really focusing on looking to see what new curriculum that we're getting for sixth grade reading, because it is, we are up for adoption. And so we're looking for sixth grade reading that aligns with elementary as well as aligns with junior high. So Ms. Tugs is going to be working with junior high also to see what's going to best prepare them for the next grade. We also are trying a pilot program for some of our sixth grade students. It's called Exact Path, and it kind of, it's a diagnostic tool. It's all Texas knowledge and skills based. And so we've got those kids in there, we're looking to, right now, we just have students in there that have showed progress in the past, and we're hoping that that will help make this line go up for these fifth graders. All right. Oh, math, math stars, okay. Sixth grade math last year, they were 92% approaches, 83 meets, 50% masters. So you can see this huge increase, lots of lots and lots of growth. And I keep seeing those lines go up. All right, and the last one I have here is, it shows these as a whole, this is how we did for students who made or exceeded the expected progress. So one of the things that the state evaluates isn't just if they're passing, it evaluates, are they growing? And they look at four, three, sixth grade, and there's certain parameters. It's not necessarily about you making a better score than the year before, it's about what areas did you grow. They've got a bunch of funky formulas that they use. But they give us percentages as a whole, four through sixth grade, what that progress is, kids that made it and exceeded it, which is also very, very important. So we go, we date back here to 14, 15, and just follow the trend here. So we're trending upwards now with kids making progress and then exceeding those expectations. And exceeding the expectations that they were set, or exceeding expected progress, isn't just for kids that score really high. We have some students who scored very, very low, have a lot of needs themselves, and they grew two or more years, which is the highest score that you can get on those results. So I'm very proud of how much we value growth in each of our individual students and looking to see everything trending up. We've got plans for areas that need a little bit of help, so. That's all I got.
Little information about the secondary campus. All right, a couple of things before we talk about some of the test scores and the data that we've collected. For the third year in a row, if you come into the high school and come and capture, we've got the banners hanging up for the third year in a row. We were named one of America's Top High Schools by U.S. News and World Report, so a great honor there that we want to continue it. Also, some distinction designations that we earned based off of some of our performance with academic achievements in science and social studies, we'll see both of those in a second. Also, top 25% compared to closing the gaps, which you saw Mr. Martin go talk about a second ago. First thing, similar information to what Ms. Juicy had. The seventh grade, which is our current eighth grade, some of the data we looked at, we went back and tracked because they are taking some of the same tests in fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade. So I wanted to show how they've done the last few years in reading, mathematics, and writing. The gold colors are their performance in fifth grade, sixth grade, and then seventh grade. Again, this is our current eighth grade class right now, and they'll have a different set of tests this year. We dropped off a little bit, okay? And sometimes that's a little more rigor, change in, could be teacher, different environment, move to a different campus, but those are all things that we're working on at this time that we're trying to improve. This is our current group of eighth grade. Again, working to try to get everything back up to what we expect. Our eighth grade, didn't want to track them back because they have a different set of tests that they go through. They're now, they're tested in science for the first time since fifth grade, they have their first social studies test that they take. So this is the last three classes that have taken these tests. All right? So back to this year's, what would be this year's, I think 11th grade, 11th graders, okay? When they took those tests, in the reading test, we 100% were satisfactory or approaches it. Again, every couple of years, we're going to change. It was satisfactory, then it was approaches, and it was commended, now it's a mastered. So that changes year to year, so it's kind of hard to put them all up there and compare it. But as close as we could, being at a grade level, 100%, 100%, we dropped down a little bit in reading to 94% with last year's eighth graders. You can see the mathematics, it stayed pretty consistent, a little bit of a drop there. And then science and social studies. And just to give you a little bit of information again, not, we're not making excuses, we're trying to find ways to keep them motivated. This was the last year that they had to pass all four to go to the next grade. The eighth graders now will tell you, I don't have to pass science, I don't have to pass social studies. You all got to pass reading and mathematics. They take these a month earlier. They take science and social studies about the middle of May. And they will, like I said, they will flat out tell you, I don't have to pass that one to go to the next grade. We're trying to do everything we can to keep them motivated so that we can get these scores back up. Those aren't acceptable with us, okay? So we're doing what we can there to make sure we get those back up. Teachers are doing a good job, they're going to continue doing that, continue pushing the kids, but doing, doing what they can at this time to make sure that they just don't pass it by. I know May 14th, I think last year's about the time they tested. And I think we were out around May 24th, so they saw the summer light coming as well. But again, not an excuse, we're making strides to improve that. Okay, getting into the tests that we have at the high school level, they're called EOCs, or end-of-course exams. Now, instead of putting all three, if you look at the first column, it'll be gray on the next five slides, that's the group that is at or approaches grade level or above. There's also grade level, which makes up that percentage, also the third percentage. But then the maroon part is what we call the master part, used to be commended. All right? You're going to see some impressive numbers there. The first column compares it to the state, right? That's how the state scored, the state of Texas scored. They were 65%, 7% were at master, the region, almost mirrored, and then we're very proud of the fact that we were at 92 and 40 are on master. Okay, and all of our staff does a good job. I can't just put it all on one person, but I do want to recognize Ms. Sophie Tesz and the job that she has done. She's done an outstanding job and will continue to do that. So she was super excited. I know we're sharing scores with you that you've had, you've known these for a while, but some of you may not have seen these before, but we're super proud of that. I know the data she got, and she was about to jump out of her skin, so excited about that quarter. Okay? EOC for English II, right? Same type of deal, again, comparing it to the state and the region, which is region six, which is centered out of Huntsville, a lot of the surrounding counties. It's a, it's a very large area, all right? But it mirrored the state. Again, very high, same teacher that teaches English I and teaches English II. Ms. Tesz, again, doing a great job. And again, way above the state on our, on our master level as well, at 23. Algebra, end-of-course, very comparative to what the state and the region are, slightly above on both of them. So again, at this time, last year, this was Ms. Daniel that was teaching Algebra I. Even some of this 40 is some eighth graders that are also taking Algebra I as well, okay? And so we're super proud of the work that Ms. Daniel's doing with them. Biology, end-of-course, state and region, again, almost mirrored each other. This, if I'm not mistaken, is the fourth year in a row we've been at 100% biology. So, and this was, and it's not just, it hasn't been the same teacher. I mean, it's, it's a credit to our kids. It's been a couple of different teachers, Ms. Goodney last year, so outstanding job there, 32% master, or 32 at master also. So again, above everybody else that's around in the state of Texas as well. And U.S. history, again, you see pretty high scores, the master level's about the same, but Coach Benedict does a fantastic job. If you ever get the opportunity to watch him on the basketball court, he takes the same approach in the classroom, and he does a great job there as well. But our kids that took the U.S. history end-of-course exam, sometimes that's a little misleading as well, because he doesn't have all of those kids in class, there's a group of them that take dual credit. And so they're taking it from a college professor, but he brings them in the last few days before the test, and he makes sure they're on the same page and does a boot camp with them, gets them prepared. And so kids that he hasn't had in class all year, not exactly sure what they've gotten from a college professor, he gets them ready for the test as well. So again, appreciate all the hard work that all of those teachers do and really all of our staff do. So just super proud of everything that they're doing. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Harris.
Okay, so I'm going to go over the, kind of, the last couple of pages of the TAPER report. And it's got a lot of new information. Tracking back, I'm going to go a year behind where all their scores were. Their scores were all over 2017 and 18. For the rest of this information, they pull it off of the 16, 17. It gives those kids a chance that may, maybe didn't complete graduation, they get a chance to complete their GED or do those kind of things, and then it pulls it all back in. It's also going to be looking at the graduating class of 2017, so it runs really behind. Our attendance rate, if you look at the last two years, they've stayed at around 97, but I thought it was worth mentioning that in 2013, 14, it was 95. So some of those incentives we've been doing have been impacting our attendance rate. And then this is compared to the state and our region, kind of like Mr. Ross had done. So we've got Iowa is at 97, our state average is at 95. So we're doing well there. The dropout rate as well, going back, I mean, for us, 2.5 is one kid. We have a small group, like our graduating class that this year was 36, I don't know about this year. And then a comparison to the state, so they have about 1.9%. We have 0.0%. The graduation rate, and this does include any kids, like I said, that might have received that high school equivalency. There's different tests they can take to meet that. The one that most people know is GED. So this is our trend. So last, well, the class of 17, we're really proud to say we had 100%. So you can see, before that, it had kind of taken some dips. And then compared to the state, they have about 94 for that year, the region 95, and then kind of 100%. Okay, so this is a new part of accountability that just came into play this year. So just to explain a little bit of it, the college career and military readiness, something we've known is coming. So as these kids were here, we were doing certain things to make sure we were trying to, everybody understand it at once, and all the state, what was going to happen and what it was going to look like. So college and military readiness is defined as a percent of graduates that meet a certain set of criteria that they have predetermined. And so just looking at that, we'll look at some of that data. So the 1718 school year was first year, like I said, that it was brought in. We don't have any comparison data, next year we'll have this year to compare to. And just so you know, our class of 2017, which is who you're going to see this talk about, only had 36 students. So one student is a huge impact for them. So we are at, we were at 66%, and you can see the state and the region, they did kind of... of mirror each other here with 54. So we were above in our total kids that met those criteria for college career and military So there are, there is some criteria, so the TSI, so from that component, some of these indexes that they can meet, I'm just going to go into those and kind of how we compare to the state. So the TSI is a test that the students have to take if they're entering college. So if they're going to go to blend, if, like any of those tier schools, they have to prove that they can do well on math and reading, so that they don't have to enter into a remedial class. So there is a way, they either take the TSI test, or their SAT, ACT might be high enough that they didn't have to meet that standard. So, sorry, this is kind of confusing, but so they had the breakdown for ELA, math, and then both of them kind of put it in average together. So we do realize that we are a little below the curve, because we're the yellow bar. So if you look at the state was the maroon, I can probably change that, because I wanted that, of course, to be Iowa. The orange bar was the region, and then we are the yellow. So we are a little bit behind the curve in that part, and because of that, we are doing some things this year, we're actually going to offer the TSI on our campus, which we haven't done before, and be able to offer it to our juniors, and then again, if they want to test their senior year, so we can try to help those guys grow to meet that college entrance. The other part of this is dual credit criteria, so if they can graduate and at least get three hours in English or math, which we offer six, or they can do nine credit hours for any subject, which they have the chance with us to earn 18. So we are above the curve here with 38%, the rest of the state's about 19. Okay, so our AP criteria, we only had 2.8. Now, for this, the kids actually had to make an AP score of a three. I'm not sure how much y'all know between the dual credit and the AP, but some of the state is pushing for AP. As a district, we feel like we'd rather encourage the dual credit, so you can kind of see the shift going back. We had a higher dual credit than the state, and we were lower here. The reason being is dual credit, you take that, you get an A, B, or C, sometimes D if you're not transferring, but you're going to get that credit, and you're going to get to keep it. AP, you can work your tail off, if you don't make a grade on an exam, you don't get the credit, you've lost it. So for us, we would rather, if your parents are putting their money in, we'd rather than get to keep that credit. So that's kind of been our push. And our 2.8% was one student out of our five that tested for our AP, we only offer that in capital. Certifications, we're ahead of the curve here too. We had 19.4 actually finish an industry-based certification, for this year it was welding. They actually received AWS, which is American Welding Society certification. So our 19.4 was not, was seven of our 36 graduates, compared to the state having two percent. And our military enlistment as well, so the N part of the CC, N R. We had 5.6, which was two of our graduates, compared to the state after. Okay? Hold on, I was just taking names and hoping I found anything.
Well, we presented as a team, so why not answer as a team? Does anyone have any questions that relate to our paper report? Families, again, I apologize to y'all, there's a lot of information in that report, and we want to make sure we summarize it as best we can, because when you go in online and you print it and look at all of it, it's, it can be difficult to understand, so.
I just wanted to have a comment. Aren't we supposed to have the campus performance objective also included in this report?
That would be a good question, Ms. Mallot.
Well, it says it, you know, on the guidelines, what you're supposed to have, and I was just wondering what they were, you know, and maybe we can get that next time.
You sure can.
And something else, oh, and that the PMS financial, was there a note where they can go in, was the PMS financial data, that's supposed to also be included on there?
I don't remember seeing that, but we will provide that as well. And if people would like, they'll be posted on the website, so that the public can see them.
And another thing I wanted to say is, because I've had questions about it, is that, although I'm very proud of our A rating and the 16% on the marquee, is that, although, to me, it's, the people are wondering, well, how can we have that, after they look at scores? They're thinking, how can we have that rating? It's kind of misleading that, that we have A rating and we're the top 16% in the state of Texas, but when you look at the scores, they're not that good for elementary. So it's kind of misleading to people in community, you're thinking, oh, we're doing good, oh, our scores are really good, but, and this didn't tell anything about, really, I mean, a little bit, but, I just, it is kind of misleading to the community and to the parents, I think.
Sure, I never want to be misleading. Just like with, anytime you're going to deal with multiple numbers, they're going to average out, and so that's why our A rating as a district comes from, is they average at both campuses.
Right, I understand, and in the elementary, it's basically based on improvement and on achievement, right? We have improvement, and so...
Nah, it's both, it's both. Those three domains, it's how did they do and growth.
And they decide on one, they pick the higher, it counts for 70%, and it's improvement.
In this case, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Like I said, if there's any information we left out that is a requirement of this report, we will post it on the internet so that everyone can see it. It's not our intent to leave anything out, it's just always a lot to fulfill, and sometimes we miss the mark, because we're human. So, I apologize if we left anything out that shouldn't have been presented tonight. But if there's no questions...
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
Didn't the scores drop about the time that the curriculum changed? In elementary?
I don't, I don't think so, I don't want to misfit, because, you know, someone has the facts in the room, I'm sure. But, you know, the upper, in the community, when we switched curriculum, that was about four years ago, and our scores are, right now, it's been the last two years they've slipped.
Well, my child had one curriculum in kindergarten and got switched in first grade to a different one.
Okay.
So, it's, I mean, I'm just wondering, how does that affect them? Because, you know, some kids started out on one curriculum, and then they just get switched. So does, is that affecting the scores?
I don't believe so. It would be the same as your child going to another district that has another curriculum, that's not going to affect them. I think the, the, the most effective...
I mean, how do we compare to other districts?
I think the, I think the most effective part of student success is the teacher, not the curriculum they pick.
Like, how do the elementary scores compare to other districts in our area?
They're lower.
We will, I just want to add to that. Whenever we realigned with certain curriculum, the group that's in 2nd grade right now, they would have seen the full effect of that, in a positive way, in a way that we're hoping for. So, we'll really see next year whenever they take the STAR test, kind of the impact of that alignment of the scores. And one of the lowest scores that we've had, the lowest groups, they had the exact same curriculum, kindergarten through 3rd grade, which is when we saw our scores drop. That was one of the reasons that we changed it, because we saw some flaws. And whenever we did change some aspects of the curriculum, it was me that got a survey from the teachers that taught a specific area that we were looking to change, and four out of five of those teachers decided they were in, but four out of five of those teachers that taught that specific thing decided, yeah, we're going to do something a little better. So we'll be able to see the full benefit of that realignment when this group of 2nd graders takes the 3rd grade STAR next year.
Ms. Sedzuski, did you hear that exactly? Did you say that because of the 3rd grade scores last year, that you changed curriculum? Is that what you said? What did, I didn't hear what you said.
Not last, no, no. When we did, when we decided to go ahead and look at everything specifically upon its curriculum, we had had some new teachers move in and things, and everybody was asking about, let's look, let's look at our phonics again. So, I took it to the five teachers that taught phonics, four out of the five voted to change it to Fontes and Penel, which was going to be Fontes and Penel Phonics, which aligned with our Fontes and Penel Literacy Intervention, which aligns to our Fontes and Penel Reading Benchmarking System. So we all, well, four out of the five, we wanted that alignment. So we went with it, it's all aligned now, and we'll see how it works out for 3rd grade. Right now, the group, that 2nd grade group, that has had that same exact instruction since the time they entered kindergarten, I will say, they're, they're doing great, they're on target, proud of them, they've, they've really made a lot of progress since they've been in kindergarten, so, let me see, good things about it. That answers your question?
I just, I just didn't hear what you were saying back there in the corner, I'm glad you stood up so I could hear you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I mean, and it's class size, I mean, when you've got big classes, teachers can only do so much to get to each child. So what are we going to do with class sizes?
Well, if you look at our current class sizes, in the taper, it gives you the state average class size, so again, I'm comparing this year's class size to the average state. There's only three grade levels that are over the state average this year, that would be 1st, 2nd, 4th, and the rest are under the state average.
What is the state average?
Well, it depends on what grade level.
Say for primary grades?
That's what I'm saying, it, it gives you the data for each individual grade level, K through 6.
What is the average for 1st, 2nd, 3rd?
For 1st is 18.8, and we got 19.5, so it's a 7/10 of a student over.
Okay.
Okay? 2nd grade is 18.8, and we're at 22.5, so there's four students.
Significant difference there.
And, what was the other grade level?
4th.
3rd.
I asked for 3rd.
3rd, the state is 19, and we're at 18.5, so we're half a student. I don't know what makes up a half student or seven of a student, but, and 4th, I heard some people ask that, the state average is 19.2, and we're at 22.5, so three students.
You know, it's not necessarily always how many kids you have in a classroom, a lot of times, it's what levels. I mean, if you have kids that are fairly close to being on level, it's not so bad. If you have a, if you have a large class, even 20, and they're not all, they're all different levels, then it's harder to get those kids where they're supposed to be. So it depends on what levels they're coming to, to these different classrooms, how much progress you can make.
I would agree with you, Ms. Mallot, but last year, phenomenal work was done with that large group in 3rd grade by Ms. Cass Davis, and those kids grew significantly, and that's, that's one of the grade levels we're seeing that's so large right now.
And you split it at midterm, you got help at midterm.
Well, we did.
You did.
That's one of the solutions for the class sizes. That's one of the solutions that we start with, the small class sizes or the big class sizes, like we saw adding Ms. Hamilton in there at midterm with us last year. We saw that it was really beneficial having an aide go in and either help monitor during that small group instructions, where the teacher can get to everybody, or pulling a small group herself under the teacher's direction, doing the stuff that the teacher was asked her to do. But that's one of the solutions, and then we go from there. Then we look at student growth, did that work? I will say, from beginning of the year to middle of the year, one of our largest groups, 2nd grade, made lots of growth from September to December. We're talking from about 70% to mid-80% on level. So, we really feel like adding an aide in there during a time that both teachers requested to have an aide in there to help, has paid off, so it's working so far.
So how often is the aide in there? How often does she come?
She goes, she comes in five days a week, at a time that they choose. If they're doing something a little bit special that they can't, that they're like, no, we're going to skip back today because we're doing a special project or presentation, then she'll go, go in and special edit or another round.
Okay, I have a question. You, you're talking about this current 2nd grade, right? That's large, is that, am I understanding you correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you're talking about how much improvement they've made from the beginning of the year to now, what's your criteria? What, how do you determine? Is this an evaluation from the reading program that you have now adopted, or, because there's been nothing from the state this part of the year?
Right.
So what criteria are you using to, to show all this growth that you're, not just for that class, but all the growth that you're talking about? What criteria are you using?
Kindergarten through 6 has the same reading benchmarking system, so we feel confident that having that exact same assessment system that's nicely aligned, follow them, we can compare.
So it's aligned to what? It's compared to what?
It's compared to the teach, what we feel like is going to be on level, what the curriculum feels like is supposed to be on level, what not, standards they've adopted.
Okay, so what you're telling me is that, and I'm not saying this is yay or nay, okay? I'm simply trying to understand. I'm not saying, you know, I'm not questioning what you're doing.
I got you.
I'm simply trying to learn, okay? So, what I'm trying to figure out here then is, so your criteria that you're using to measure growth of those children is based on the reading program that you adopted? It's not compared to the state, other kids, it's not compared to a group except what's in Iowa?
Well, the standards that the reading program has is a national norm. So, you know, most of the kids in the nation, when they're middle of the year, 2nd grade, they should all be on this level, either instructional or independently. And so that's how they're getting those scores, and that's what we go by too.
So, but, but, okay, but, but the reading program that you adopted, Fontes and Penel different, they have set this criteria?
Yes, according to national norms, yes, and so we're...
And their national norm is based on their program, not some other program?
Right.
So it's within their program?
Yes, and it is an evidence-based program.
Okay, yes, thank you.
So are all of the grades that have excessive number of kids getting help?
If they need it, not, any of them has asked for it except for 2nd grade. But, you know, if any teacher comes to us and says, hey, I'm really struggling to meet the needs of these kids, that, you know, this is dropping, this is dropping, I need some help, absolutely, we'll find, we'll do whatever we can to get somebody in there. I've gone in and pulled small groups before.
Everybody talks about the 5th grade class has discipline problems, and they were behind and blah, blah, blah. Well, if we don't reach the lower kids, then they're going to be the 5th grade class with discipline problems and behind.
Right, and right now, we're not seeing that at all. We're not seeing anything compared to what we have seen. So, we're looking at, what are we doing to help those big groups of classes, and is it working? And a jump from, you know, 70% to mid-80% on reading is success for us, we see that that's working for us. At any point we see it's not working, we'll, we'll come up with something different.
I got some positivity to spread, so, thank y'all for all that you do, teaching, I come from a teaching family, both my parents are teachers, 35-year teachers, and teaching is the only industry that you can't control your, your base product, and you can only improve what you got. So I'd like to thank all of y'all who are teachers, who work with these kids. I see the love that each one of y'all give, my, my kids, my daughter, my son, and the other kids, so I would like to thank every one of you, thank you.
Any more questions? Motion to adjourn? A motion to adjourn, second by Sycott, I guess I can... Another paper on your hand? Okay, motion carries. We're going to move to the regular scheduled meeting, and in the regular scheduled meeting, we're going to go straight to campus and administrative reports, so we can give the word.
Yes, yes. So we're going to be doing elementary report. Ms. Sedzuski, you're backed up for a different reason.
No.
And again, I apologize to the elementary families, this is taking longer than we expected, so I apologize for that.
First of all...
First, if you will turn the projector off, so it doesn't blind anybody.
Well, thanks for your board, it is January, it's School Board Appreciation Month, and our elementary classes made some pretty special gifts for each one of y'all. Pretty cute, I love Pre-Pay's little book about what, if I was a school board member, this is what I would do. Pretty good. Our little Bulldogs of the Month, sitting here so patiently the whole time, no wonder your teacher selected you. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call up our Bulldogs, and Bulldogs, when you get your certificate, stand up here, and I'm going to say something nice about you that your teachers wrote, okay? All right, we'll do ladies first, Pre-Pay Bulldog of the Month, Luna Van Dusseldorf. And Ms. Wheaton said about Luna, she said, Luna exhibits dedication, she is committed to doing her best in class and is loyal to her friendships. Our next Bulldog of the Month is Landon Chapman, come on up here, Landon.
Hi, Daddy has a picture.
Ms. Wheaton said, Landon is a hard worker, and he takes pride in his classwork and always does his best. All right, our 6th grade Bulldog of the Month, Blair Smithy. And about Blair, her teacher said, Blair goes above and beyond to help others and shows... And about Blair, her teacher said, Blair goes above and beyond to help others and shows kindness in many ways to students and teachers. She always turns in her work on time and is eager to help us as teachers in anything we ask, and sometimes even before we ask. Blair is friendly, courteous, and polite. Blair shows kindness to her fellow classmates and is eager to help them at any time. She is an amazing, motivated, responsible young lady, and we are very proud to have her in our classroom.
And we apologize for cutting in the basketball practice.
All right. Uh, and our last Bulldog of the Month is Tate Shaw. His teacher said that Tate has such a kind heart. He is a responsible, hard-working student and always does what he's supposed to do. He puts forth tremendous effort and is kind to his classmates. He is always willing to help, is polite, courteous, and thoughtful. He's an exemplary young man, and we have thoroughly enjoyed having him in our classroom.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate all your support.
All right, and then we have to recognize our January Employee of the Month, Ms. Stacy Things about Stacy, uh, Ms. Webb is known as one of our top growers when it comes to student achievement. She sees the potential in all of her students, pushes them to their limits, and then some more. Her students are frequent ringers of the Bulldog Bell for the goals that they meet in her class. She is also our GT teacher for the elementary, and she's a sponsor of our student Bible study group. Mrs. Webb is someone who will try anything to help her students be successful, whether it's teaching percentages by having her students hit the sales on Amazon, or glory students to morning tutoring with breakfast. She does what it takes for her students.
Thank you, Mrs. Webb. Appreciate it.
Yes, I'm done.
Mr. Ross, one here.
Okay. Uh, I apologize, we don't have our Bulldogs. We're in the process of getting those right now, our Employee of the Month, but, uh, just got some things that are going on at the high school right now. Enrollment numbers, we're down to, we're two oh nine, or two eleven, last one for two oh nine. We got, uh, one checked out, went back to Navasoda, and one went to Littlemont Fort Worth. So we're down to two oh nine at secondary campus. Uh, second semester's off and running. Uh, on January seventeenth, our student council sponsored our second blood drive for the year. It was another successful event for us. Uh, also, the same day, our campus advisory committee met, talked about a number of topics and ideas that we felt should be discussed about the campus, things we'll be hearing about later. Uh, this Friday, the eighth grade's going on field trip over to A&amp;M. They've been doing some studying in English and reading book, and they're gonna give you more information on that, a little more in-depth and a little different perspective. So look forward to them getting over there. Uh, at this time of year, we got lots of things going on as far as sports. Basketball season's a full swing. Junior High plays, has games here tomorrow night against Snoke, and then after that, I'm pretty sure Junior High starts playing on Mondays, uh, but Snoke was out of students Monday, so we moved that one to Thursday. Currently, our high school girls are in fourth place in district. They're two and four. Uh, we're down to one team. We don't have a JV team anymore. We've had a number of injuries and strange events that happened on the girls' side of the cheer basketball. So we're down to one team with the girls. The varsity boys, if you made it out last night, if you didn't, shame on you, okay? Because if you missed a go last night with Normandy, uh, right now, we're currently in a three-way tie with Snoke and Normandy. Uh, all of us are sitting at three and one, and so, uh, we finished the first round of district Friday night over at Burton. And just to let you know, there were, we, they canceled, Burton had to cancel the JV game. They only had five kids, one was gonna be out of town, so there's only two games Friday night. Girls, varsity girls start at five, and boys will be around six, three or so. Also, if you're interested in being here on Saturday, there will be a junior high girls' basketball tournament in the elementary gym in the high school gym. Schedule will start around nine-thirty. Championship's supposed to be around four-thirty, but typically, they run the clock and keep it rolling, and so possibly could be out of here by four-thirty, so you just never know. Uh, and also, softball practice started last Friday. Baseball gets to start this Friday. Uh, hopefully, we won't have to get out of clippers and goggles and all that to play this year, but, uh, hopefully, get some weather decent enough to get outside and play softball and baseball this spring. And then just to let you know, I, we, we mentioned this last month, the donkey basketball is coming out February eleventh. Anybody interested in riding? Uh, the juniors are gonna be out selling tickets and putting on flyers to promote the convention. You'll probably get hit up for those here pretty soon, and there's always a community thing if anybody wants to ride, so just to let y'all know. That's what's going on at secondary.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Uh, superintendent's report, um, government shutdown. I, I'm not getting political on you, it's, it could possibly affect Texas public schools, just so you know. Ms. Evans, Director of Food Services, uh, shared some information with me today, as a matter of fact. Um, and if the government shutdown continues, that starts to affect the Texas Department of Agriculture, who sends us some money. Uh, one program that could be affected is our commodities supplemental food program, which we get about two hundred dollars a month, uh, from. And, uh, if the shutdown continues, I think the last payment we would receive on that is February fifteenth. So I want you guys to be aware of that. Um, two hundred dollars a month, we can handle that, um, but there's a much bigger one that could be affected on March fifteenth, if it continues that long, and that's our National School Lunch and Breakfast Program, um, and that's about twelve thousand dollars a month. So let's continue to hope and pray that the government shutdown ceases, and I know that there's families in our community that are being affected by this as well, because they're government employees. So keep the families in your prayers, if you will, and just wanted the board to be, um, aware of that possibility. Uh, what Ms. Evans is doing for me, tomorrow, she's contacting other school districts to see, uh, if they have plans. If it went this far, worst-case scenario, it starts to affect our free and reduced lunch students. Um, and so what are some of the other districts planning if that, if that happens? So we wanna make sure we're, we're ready for that. That's worst-case scenario though, so. Um, Mr. Dave Jordan, we're gonna have to get him in here one month and recognize him, because he continues to do amazing things for our district, so teachers that are here can tell you, uh, you call, he's there to fix it, it's non-stop. Uh, but he's also been on a mission to save our district money this year. He's kind, he's went out and bid a couple of different things. I think I've shared that in the last couple of months. Uh, but we are switching firearm monitoring company, and, uh, that's gonna save us about three thousand dollars this year, switching those companies. So that's a good thing, and he's always at work with that. Speaking of Mr. Jordan, he spent a little money on this germ machine. I don't know, it's phenomenal, but, uh, he could bring it in here and, I think, fifteen, maybe thirty seconds the most, and it would disinfect this entire room, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't bother us. It has the smell like a room freshener, but, um, so we're using that. I can tell you that we had, um, we have two confirmed cases of flu right now in the district, both at elementary campus, and before I even knew, we had the flu cases. Dave had already been in those classrooms with our germ killer machine. So, um, hopefully, we can avoid, uh, the flu maddening that we had last year. Um, want everybody in the room to know, and community, feel, feel free to share this with other community members, board members, uh, want your communication on this. Our district committee will start meeting from between now and next board meeting in February, uh, to work on the calendar for 2019, 2020 year. If there's something specific you would like for that committee to look at or consider, please email me, and I'm talking to the community as well. Email me, I'll pass that along to the committee as we put that calendar together, and hopefully have it here for your approval in February. And the last thing I have, uh, next week, I will be at TACAM Midwheat Conference, um, and on Monday, I've been invited to a luncheon, um, by Claims Administrative Services, and our district is receiving a safety award scholarship. So because we haven't filed any claims, they're gonna give us some money. I don't know how much it is, but I'll fill you in in February what we got. Hopefully, uh, I mean, it's more than just a free lunch, so, um, but that's all I have for superintendent's report.
I haven't forgot you, but Ross, we're gonna, can we let the auditor go? Okay.
Do, and families, if, that were here, we're recognizing your children, they're on this web, if y'all would like to go, you're free to go. If you wanna stick around, you can stick around, but I want, we try to, we try to move the dinner around so we can recognize y'all and let y'all go before, uh, it gets too late or too cold. Thank y'all again, and we appreciate, appreciate your support. Appreciate having you here.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sweetheart.
Okay, I don't remember for school.
Um, yes, I'd like to introduce Ms. Dolla Deere. She's here from Belle, Harris, Pacha, um, and she's gonna be doing your audit. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, here to present your annual financial audit, and we've, uh, first, like to thank the office for giving us everything that we did to, to gather all the information, to present, uh, you know, to put the financials together. It took a lot of, of work this year, but we appreciate your hard work, so thank you. Um, I'm basically gonna go over about the three most important pages of the audit. I'll, also, you, we had a big change, um, a presentation of what we're doing through there, so I'll kinda walk you through that, um, with those, and that shows up on, uh, at the net position level. So we'll kinda talk about the two different financial pages that are showing up in your audit. So if you'll flip with me to page seven, this is the page that we consider the most important out of your audit, and you've received an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that you can receive, that there are no material in the statements, and all disclosures have been made in your audit. So great job on getting the unmodified opinion. All right, and if you'll flip with me now to page thirty-one, we'll look at the general fund revenues and expenditures for the year. If you're looking at row fifty-nine-hundred, I'm sorry, fifty-twenty on the total revenues, five million, sixty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Going down the page, if you're looking at your total expenditures, that's on line sixty-thirty, that's a total expenditures of four million, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Other sources and uses, you got a transfer out of eighteen thousand, leaving you an ending fund balance of seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. So that, you have a net positive change to your fund balance of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. And I apologize for my voice, just getting over a little cold. Thanks a little bit. Um, but, so you had a little positive change on your fund balance there, so great job on that. All right, we're gonna flip over to page, uh, sixty-nine. And this is where we look at your general fund expenditures compared to, uh, your, the actual budget that was, um, approved here in the, in the board. So what we would not want to see are negative variances over there on that right-hand plot column that you'll see going down on the expenditure side. You'll see that y'all have, uh, all positive variances over there, which tells us that your expenditures are coming in lower than what your budget was. So great job in staying within the goals set forth by the board. Good job on that part. Uh, now we're gonna flip, and that's basically what we consider the three most important pages out of that audit. Now, um, if you remember, a few years ago, we added the TRS liability onto the, onto your, uh, statements. So this year, the big change was we had to add other post-employment benefits. So that was another big liability coming out. Now, the difference between the, the financials that we just talked about and the ones that I'm, I'm going to talk about is that, uh, what is, we just looked at is, is on an, um, a modified accrual basis, which that is, uh, that has some receivables and payables within those things, but basically, what you have in fund balance, that, um, that is like the real money of what the, what the school would have. Okay, so whenever we bump up to the net position level, that's where we're adding in the liabilities of the TRS liability plus the OPEB liability. Your capital assets are brought in at that level. So it's kinda the difference between the two different statements that we're looking at. Uh, so if you remember when, on the TRS liability, and I wasn't here for that presentation, but those numbers are based on what actuariales come up with, of what that liability is gonna be for you in the future. So it is not based on real numbers, is what somebody is coming up with, what those liabilities could be in the future. So they've done the same thing with those OPEB benefits when we're adding those on. So I'm gonna have you flip to page forty-nine. I think that shows you probably the, the best, um, picture of those liabilities. If you're looking at the net pension liability, you'll see that is, thank you. It's going down here, but further out going.
It's okay.
You'll see on your net pension liability, um, the prior year, your beginning balance was a million twenty-one eighty-nine, a million twenty-one thousand, eighty-nine dollars. So you had a reduction of that, leaving you with eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, two seventy-three in that net pension liability. And again, that, those numbers are gonna change from year to year based on that actuarial report and what the interest rates are doing out there in the market. So that next one is the one that we've added on this year. You'll see that if this had been added on, because we, we basically had to do a restatement as if you had OPEB last year. So your balance at the OPEB liability would have been two million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. Um, they did some changes within that actuarial during the year, and so you had a reduction of the million to, uh, leaving you an ending OPEB liability of one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three seventy-five. So now, now that we've kinda showed you those numbers, I'm gonna flip you up to the net position so that you're seeing how those liability numbers are affecting that net position page. All right, and I got my pages out of order here. Good. Flip to page twenty-three. So if you're looking down in that, uh, non-current liability section, that's where you'll see the net pension and the net OPEB liabilities coming in, whereas before, um, those were not there. So how that affects that net pension, uh, that total net position page, you'll see down there that you're at three hundred and one thousand, nine fifteen. So I know that was a lot of information I just gave you. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on it.
Sorry, that was on page twenty-three?
Yes, twenty-three. Yes, sorry, twenty-three. Yeah.
Was it the Senate bill or was that a?
That was, um, yeah, that had to do with a, a gap change, um, generally accepted accounting principles. They, they went ahead and changed that, but, um, and it had more to do with, but, but there's, you know, our huge picture, because it wasn't just schools that affected, it was cities, counties, everybody in governmental, um, got affected by that, but you had some agencies that were out there. I think City of, uh, Chicago, I think, was one of them, but they have those big pension that are sitting out there that are not monitored by anybody, that the liabilities are not getting recorded, they're not funding them. So, um, what they did was they just brought it all, that you're gonna have to record all of them, so that everybody sees those huge liabilities out there. You know, for us, the, the ones that are participating in these, these state-funded or, you know, just, you, you don't have the same liability that you do for those great, those that are not funded out there. Y'all, y'all have funding in yours.
So the net position is a good thing that we've went up? Is that correct? Good idea, thing that we've got a three hundred and one thousand dollar net pension.
Well, and that, that's the part that it's, these are not real numbers for the school, because we, you were only talking about what the school actually. if you were only talking about what the school actually has, you need to go back and look at what's in fund balance. Because this is more, it's going to have to do with if you're going out for bonds or something other, that's the only time that somebody's actually going to come and look at that page. But everybody is having to record that liability, so it's not just your school. Everybody's going to be taking into consideration those liabilities that are getting recorded on there across the board.
Board members, do you have any questions? Ms. Dear?
Once again, unqualified.
Yeah, right. It's the same thing, yeah, same thing. They just changed the wording on that, too. They like to change it up, get everybody messed up.
Not just the state changes or changes.
That's right.
Somebody accept the auditor report as presented? We accept it as presented? Need a motion? Motion to accept the auditor report as presented?
Second.
Second, by Carolyn, doesn't favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 6-0. Give me one second.
Now, the certificate of board. Do you want me to take the certificate of board with me tonight?
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, just scan it to you, Mark, and we'll get it uploaded to TEA.
All right, we'll move back to public forum. We did have one speaker, Honorary Speaker, sign up. Ms. Brock.
You'll pass those to the board members. And if y'all will pass those around, anybody that cares to see. Have to forgive my voice, I do have a cold. And a slight frog. But my attendance at this meeting is to reaffirm in my heart and mind I OISD's responsibility to educate the children of Iowa. I spent some time a while back on the TEA website, and what I found made me want to bury my head in weed. Let's take a little walk through history. Please look at the first page of the packet that I gave you. It's a compilation of the test scores for reading and math from the time I retired in 2006 until 2011, showing Iowa's scores on the state average. You will see that our scores are consistently top-notch. That is a pattern that Iowa has followed for many, many years. If you'll turn the page, you'll see the graphs that I prepared from the information on the TEA website for grades three through six for reading and math. Please remember, each spot on each graph represents a different set of children. We are not looking at the ups and downs of the same group. Because reading is the foundation for all education, and the primary grades are where that foundation is built, let's look at third-grade reading scores for 2016. The primary grades are of utmost importance, because if you don't have a firm foundation, by that time, it affects your learning for the rest of your life. This group of children scored an 85 to the state 73. The state scores are on the chart below the graph. Please turn the page. That same group is now in fourth grade in 2017. Their scores are still good. Turn the page. They are now in fifth grade during 2018 with good scores. The group that was in third grade three years ago in 2016 consistently scored well. How did that happen? It happened just like it had for decades before. The curriculum for the primary grades, Kinder, I, II, and III did its job. By third grade, the children were provided with the skills necessary to pass the test. The children could read a grade level or above. No matter what increases the state of Texas made to the level of difficulty on the test, Iowa always met the challenge. You can see that on the first page where I gave you the history from when I retired on. I didn't go back to when I was teaching, because I just went after I left there. If you will turn back to the first graph, and let's look at the children that were in third grade in 2017. They started schooling Kinder in 2014, first in 2015, second in 2016, and third in 2017. Look at their scores by third grade, 48 percent. That's horrible. You don't see any of that in the entire history of Iowa. You don't ever see that. That's never been before, ever. In fourth grade in 2018, they scored 68 percent. They made a commendable improvement, but still, they're below the state average and considerably below Iowa's standards. Please turn back to the first chart. Look at the kids that were in third grade last year in 2018. They started Kinder in 2015, first in 2016, second in 2017. The third grade scores were 73 percent with a state average of 77 percent. Something has changed. The children that were in third grade after 2016 didn't get what the earlier children got. What changed in Kinder, first, and second that pulled the foundation out from under our third-grade students? There are only two factors that I know of, my opinion, that can result in such severe conditions. The first is teacher turnover. You know there's been considerable teacher turnover during the last several years. We've had a lot of teachers leave for whatever reason, I don't know, I'm not privy to that. But you know, teacher turnover does affect the children. Secondly, curriculum change. The primary kids had, the primary grades had a state-adopted reading program that teaches comprehension skills designed to prepare the students for the state-mandated test with an additional strong supplemental phonics program that teaches decoding skills. It's my understanding that that program was removed from the curriculum and replaced by a program called Fontis and Pennell, which is not on the state-adopted TEA list. I know nothing about this program, so I'm not saying it's good or bad. I don't know anything about it, I can't make that statement. All I know is we changed our reading curriculum, and our scores dropped below state average. I have three questions for the board tonight. If my conclusions are not correct as to the cause of these below-state-average scores in third grade, then what is the reason that we're so standard? What will be done to bring Iowa back to where we have always been? We have always been top, and from the 70s on, from World War II on. I'm serious. We've always been top. And now, where are we? I'm sorry, I get emotional. Iowa ISD has been, will always be my babies. Those children are my babies. That's the way I've always felt, that's the way I look at it now. I'm sorry, I got off track. How can you guarantee, session three, how can you guarantee Iowa ISD will maintain its high standards? We need to get back up where we belong, folks. Please take the graphs and tables home and look them over more closely. And remember, those dots on these graphs are not just numbers, they're children. When we make the score of 48 percent, and 52 percent of our children, Iowa's babies failed. They didn't make it. Did they fail us by doing poorly on a test? Or did we fail them by not giving them the foundation that they needed? And I think you know the answer to that question. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. And I know you asked this question, but we can't respond to you.
I understand. Those questions are for y'all to think about.
Retoric.
No, they're not.
All you want you to be.
I just didn't expect an answer tonight. They're just questions that I'm sure you all are asking yourselves anyway. What are we going to do?
Yes, ma'am, well. Let's see, I have skipped around so much, I don't know what I've heard.
Wait to seven, now? Any discussion?
Consider agenda, what number is that? Item number five, consideration of the agenda, if there's any discussion, any discussions that you all want to move? Okay, any type of motion? Motion by Scott. Second by Luke. Those who favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, those abstaining? Five, oh, one with Mike abstaining? Okay, item number six, we've already done item number six.
We're done number seven, I think, is that correct?
Item number seven.
Just want to recommend that the board quit moving the regular February board meeting to Monday, February 25th, because the regular schedule would fall on a school holiday the week before.
Okay, any discussion?
So move.
Motion by Mike. Second by Jason, doesn't favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 6-0. Item number eight.
Thank you. Personnel.
Personnel.
We do have one recommendation for higher, that would be filling the position left up by Scott Hessel. Mr. Ross, if you want to present that.
See there in your packet, I recommend Colt Sharpton for employment for the remainder of the 18, 19 school year. Mr. Sharpton will be teaching ag science courses at the high school. Colt has an extensive background in agriculture, has been heavily involved with the animal science department at Texas A&amp;M University in many ways. Now, he's been an animal science lecturer, he's filled in there for professors as well, coached the Texas A&amp;M Wool Judging Team, not only to state but national honors there. He worked with the Aggieland Lamb and Aggieland Goat Camps, and a teacher for Iowa ISD will allow him to compete, or complete all his requirements through the Texas Teachers Alterment Certification Program, or become a certified ag science teacher. Mr. Sharpton's worked hard to achieve his certification, and he would do a great job serving at District 110. And I can just say, this isn't written on there, but the references that I called and checked on said, outstanding, said some of the things I've already mentioned, but also said, if you hire this guy, he'll take your ag science program to another level. So, been in there, been in the class already with him, he showed up this week, the kids have taken to him. I'm sure Mr. Ferguson gives a better example of how they've taken to him, that seem like they're really going to join, and I think he can do outstanding work for us. So, my recommendation is hiring Colt Sharpton for ag science.
Move to accept your recommendation.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Carolyn. Any discussion? No discussion, doesn't favor. Motion carries 6-0. Any other questions?
We do need to go into closed session. Personnel, hands, safety, safety.
All right, we're going to enter closed session at 7:51 under 551, those who have full personnel.
Thank you.